Good evening, everyone. The time is 6:00 PM. It's Tuesday, January the 2nd. I'm going to call the special city council meeting to order with the city secretary. Please call the roll.
Mitchell?
Here.
Rizzo?
Present.
Heiser?
Here.
Zuniga?
Present.
Harris?
Here.
Parsley?
Tobias?
Here.
All right, six members present. We have a quorum. Next up, citizen comments period. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward? Seeing none, I'm going to close citizen comments. It's now closed. Next up is executive session. Does anybody want to volunteer to read it? All right, I got it. Pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, City Council reserves the right to convene into executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting. City Council may convene into executive session pursuant to any lawful exception contained in Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including any or all the following topics: pending or contemplated litigation, settlement agreement, or to seek the advice of the city attorney and attorneys concerning legal issues pursuant to Section 551.071 Texas Government Code and Section 1.05 Texas Disciplinary Rules of Professional Conduct, Kyle Sports Plaques Project RFQ 2023-40-Pard. Possible purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate pursuant to Section 551.072 to deliberate the purchase of real property for public purpose, purchase of property for city facilities and public purposes, acquisition of property for transportation improvements and related infrastructure, convene into executive session pursuant to Section 551.087 Texas Government Code to deliberate regarding the offer of economic incentives to one or more business prospects that the city seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the city, Project Sahara. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. There was no action taken during executive session. I'm going to call this meeting back to order. There will be no action taken now. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we are adjourned. Good evening, everyone. The time is 7:02 PM. It is Tuesday, January the 2nd, and I'm going to call this regularly scheduled city council meeting to order. Would all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city secretary, please call the roll.
Mitchell?
Here.
Rizzo?
Present.
Heiser?
Here.
Zuniga?
Present.
Harris?
Here.
Parsley?
Here.
Tobias?
Here.
All right, all members are present. We have a quorum. Next up is citizen comments. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on any item to please do so. We do ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and that you direct those comments to the mayor and council. We also ask that you fill out a citizen comments form and submit that to either myself or the city secretary. I have two registered to speak. First up is Ms. Amanda Stark.
Is it working?
There you go.
Good evening, mayor, mayor, pro tem and council. My name is Amanda Stark, and I am here on behalf of Tracy Sheel. Tracy had an incident right before Christmas and had to stay at the Hampton Inn for a few days and wanted to publicly recognize some of these staff members. I'm going to read an email that she asked me to read. Mayor, mayor, pro tem and council, my name is Tracy Sheel, and as some of you know, I found myself in a bit of a bind this Saturday before Christmas. Had nowhere to go due to some home circumstances and had to go into a hotel in order to have people there in case they needed something. Luckily, luckily, I chose to stay at the Hampton Inn here in Kyle. Not only were they thoughtful and professional, but also very helpful. When I fell face down in front of the registration desk while on crutches, they could have refused service. They did not. Instead, they found a chair with casters and wheeled me up to a room. When my stay was extended because of the holidays, they made phone calls in order to keep me in my room and not move me. They went beyond their job titles to be very helpful, so I wanted to give a shout out to the front office staff at the Hampton, excuse me, at the Hampton Inn. They showed why I moved to Kyle and why I call it home. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next up is Derek Pompey. On the item? I'll call you on the item. All right, those are the only forms that I have. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak? Seeing none, I'm going to close citizen comments period. Citizen comments period is now closed. Next up is agenda orders. Is there anyone on the council who wishes to request to move any items around? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to appointments. A resolution appointing a representative to the San Marcos Animal Shelter Advisory Committee. Chief Barnett.
Thank you, mayor and council. Jeff Barnett, chief of police for the record. A simple item before you. The city of Kyle certainly contracts our animal shelter services with the city of San Marcos like other entities throughout the county do. As such, you are afforded one member to the Animal Shelter Services Committee that can give some guidance to the city of San Marcos upon our recommendations and such on how to run the shelter and services provided. That one position right now is currently filled by councilmember Zuniga, and he has requested that the council take up consideration to appoint a replacement for him as he moves on to other committees and other duties. We have a staff recommendation, but you can certainly appoint whoever you want, and that staff recommendation is our current animal shelter supervisor, our animal services supervisor, Ms. Brianna Geddis, and she has served in that position for many years in recent, in the past.
Okay. Councilmember Zuniga, do you have any thoughts on that?
Yes, thank you, chief. I think it's a yearly position, so the year is coming up that I've been serving on it. Is that correct?
No, sir. This is a three-year appointment. Yes, sir. You have completed the first year, so this would take the place and add, or this would replace it with your designate for a period of two years.
Okay. And some of the thoughts I wanted to say is I'd like to express what an honor serving on the animal advisory committee was for me and working with all the animal shelter employees, staffing, and county, as well as our city animal control professionals. The work on this advisory committee is so important to help promote the welfare and protection of lost and abandoned animals. In addition, I believe that it'll be more positive moving forward to transfer this position back to one of our professional Kyle animal control officers so they can be more involved and active in the planning and budgeting for the animal control resources in partnership with Hayes County Pet Resource Center. Having served on the animal control advisory committee, we made progress with implementation of uniformity with the ordinances throughout the county. We improved volunteer participation, raised awareness about pet adoptions, and advocated for safety and humane treatment of animals. We also helped with vouchers and TNVR resources with paws and pals for anyone that needed one. We set up an official subcommittee that meets quarterly to strategize cohesive long-term planning for the San Marcos Animal Shelter and for all Hayes County. I'm going to continue to promote this work and these objectives on the subcommittee, but again, I wanted to clarify that the leading position should be transferred back to our animal control officers. And on a final note, the after-hours check-in and enforcement is the area that needs to be refined with consistency to help improve emergency and non-emergency calls throughout the city and to cause less trauma to unfortunate animals that are in need of assistance. So councilmembers, I'll still serve on the subcommittee, but I think the official position should go back into our professional animal control.
Councilmember Heiser.
So just to confirm, you don't want to do this anymore? That you're stepping back willingly?
I'm stepping back only on subcommittee, which is another committee underneath the advisory, shelter advisory committee.
Okay, so you're still involved?
Yes, but in a less leading front row.
Okay. I have no issue. I just want to make sure.
I served a whole year.
Councilmember Parsley.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Brianna Geddis as a representative to the San Marcos Animal Shelter Advisory Committee.
All right, motion by Councilmember Parsley, seconded by Councilmember Heiser that we appoint Brianna Garris to the Animal Shelter Board. Is there discussion on that motion? Holdouts in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. Thanks, chief. Next up, agenda item three, resolution approving the appointment of Poeta Asher to seat one of the Community Gardens Committee. Ms. Espinoza.
Mayor and council, Mariana Espinoza Parks and Recreation Director. As you know, city council approved a resolution forming a temporary community guardians committee in March 7th. We had initially 25 applications. We reached out to all 25, interviewed 14, and appointed seven. And on this past December, December 14th, seat one was vacated. Of the initial interviews and 25 applications, Ms. Poeta Asher was next in line for appointment. Ms. Asher has lived in the city of Kyle for the last seven years, and she currently resides in the Plum Creek neighborhood. She's extremely passionate about food equity and access to food for all, and she's looking forward to serving on the community guardians committee. She is here in person if you have any questions, and staff recommends approval.
All right, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant or comments? Motions? Laura Lee?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept Poeta Asher, the nominee, as nominated to the Community Gardens Committee.
Second. All right, motion by councilmember Harris, seconded by councilmember Heiser that we appoint Poeta Asher to the Gardens Committee. Is there any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye? All opposed? All right, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you for your service. All right, next up is agenda item number four, resolution approving the appointment of Emily Mueller and Emma Sanchez to the Kyle Area Youth Advisory Council. Ms. Espinoza.
Mayor and council, Mariana Espinoza Parks and Recreation Director. We initially received 17 applications for the Kyle Area Youth Advisory Council. The city council appointed 14, which left two vacancies remaining. Since then, staff have approved additional, or have interviewed additional applicants. We recommend Emily Mueller and Emma Sanchez. Emily is currently a sophomore and the secretary of her class at school, and Emma is currently a junior and the vice president of her class at school. Both ladies are here in attendance today if you have any questions, and staff recommends approval.
All right, does anybody have any questions or comments? Councilmember Heiser.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointments of Emily Mueller and Emma Sanchez to the Kyle Area Youth Advisory Council.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Heiser, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Rizzo that we approve the nominees to the kayak. Is there discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye? All opposed? All right, motion carries seven to zero. All right, next up is agenda item number five, appoint Cassie Anderson for seat two of the City of Kyle Ethics Commission. Mayor Pro Tem.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. So Casey is, just a quick bio on her. Graduated from Hayes High School, went to the University of Texas in Austin, where she received her bachelor's of business administration in accounting. Shortly after she graduated UT, she started working for Farm Credit Bank of Texas, where she's been there for 27 years. She's been in accounting her entire life, her entire career, but she was my past ethics advisor, so she has the experience, has been, served well while her time on the Ethics Commission, and I think she'd be a good pick.
Okay. Does anybody have any thoughts or comments on that? Motions?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
All right, second. Motion by Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by mayor that we appoint Cassie Anderson to seat two on the Ethics Commission. Is there discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye? All opposed? All right, motion carries seven to zero. Our next up is agenda item number six, resolution of the city council of the city of Kyle, Texas, appointing an alternate member to the Campo Transportation Policy Board. This is my item. As you recall, we had conversation, I think, at the last meeting about the fact that there is an alternate member position that we can fill for Campo, and that was once held by former councilmember and mayor pro tem Ellison. And since he has stepped off, we haven't reappointed an alternate member. I know that Mr. Rizzo had made some comments about that as well. I didn't know if anyone else had thoughts, but it seems like a good thing to appoint an alternate as we go through the process.
So definitely want to give every opportunity to serve, so I did have some thoughts of maybe, Councilmember Heiser, would you be interested in serving on backup as on Campo?
Yeah, I guess I would. What are the, how often does it meet?
The Campo Board meets monthly at 2:00 in southwest Austin, more west Austin, just on the other side of the Pinbacker Bridge, actually. So that's, I'm the one that would go, but in the event that I couldn't go, it's like normally on a Tuesday, or a Monday, I'm sorry, at like 2:00 in the afternoon.
And the reason I'm stepping back a little bit is my job has changed a little bit, so my time requirements are a little different now, so if you, I'd like to make a motion to approve Councilmember Heiser as your alternate on Campo.
Second.
All right, motion by Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Councilmember Parsley that we appoint Councilmember Heiser as an alternate to the Campo Board. Is there discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye? All opposed? All right, motion carries seven to zero. All right, next up, reports and commission, presentations, proclamation regarding Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Councilmember Parsley.
Thank you. It is an honor to finally be able to bring a proclamation honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Personally, his contributions to justice and equality are really appreciated. So whereas the, oh, so sorry, guys, the wrong one. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. is a pivotal figure in the American civil rights movement, advocated for equality, justice, and nonviolent resistance. His profound speeches, including the iconic "I Have a Dream," inspire ongoing efforts to eliminate discrimination and promote a society based on the principles of freedom and equality. And whereas Dr. King's legacy extends beyond racial equality, encompassing a broader vision of social justice, his starless pursuit of civil rights serves as a timeless reminder that individuals can bring about transformative change through peaceful means, inspiring generations to strive for a world where everyone is judged by their character rather than external factors. And whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s commitment to justice and equality transcended national borders, influencing movements worldwide, his emphasis on love, compassion, and understanding as tools for social change resonate as a powerful call to build bridges and dismantle barriers, fostering a global community rooted in shared humanity. And whereas the city of Kyle encourages and promotes strong and inclusive communities and recognize and celebrate efforts to bring people together for a greater good. Now therefore be proclaimed by the city council of the city of Kyle that January 18, 2024 should be remembered as Martin Luther King Jr. Day.
All right, thank you very much. Do you have any commentary on that?
No.
Does anybody else have anything they'd like to add? All right.
Just want to thank Councilmember Parsley for bringing this forward and just reminding everyone that, just to care about everybody and to always respect everyone, love is what's going to change everything. When we care about your fellow man, it's important.
You're here. Thank you, Daniella, for bringing this forward. I echo Councilmember Rizzo's sentiment. It's very important time of the year, so thank you.
All right, next up is agenda item number eight, proclamation regarding Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. Councilmember Parsley.
Thank you again, and it is really exciting for me to be able to bring a proclamation to thank our law enforcement group, especially our Kyle ones, and we feel very blessed and lucky to have also a law enforcement member, as one of the members of the city council, which is councilmember Tobias. So National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day was first established in 2015 as a collective effort by several organizations to recognize and show appreciation for our law enforcement community, a day for all of us to express gratitude for the men and women who on a daily basis keep our city safe, making Kyle such a desirable place to live. And whereas the city of Kyle police officers are brave and dedicated individuals who protect our citizens, families, and communities. And whereas the men and women who serve on the front lines of public safety strive to protect and serve, facing challenges with resilience and professionalism. And whereas the city of Kyle police officers through collaboration with communities work towards creating environments where citizens can leave free from fear, promoting a sense of unity and cooperation. And whereas our law enforcement officers play a crucial role in maintaining public safety, upholding the law, and ensuring that a just society. Their dedication and commitment contribute to the well-being of communities, fostering trust and security. Now therefore be proclaimed by the city council of the city of Kyle that January 9, 2024 should be recognized as Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. So that'll be it. And I just wanted to say thank you to our chief of police and our Pedro that are here for all that you do for our city, for keeping us safe.
All right, thank you. Does anybody have any commentary on that? Chief and Tracy, do you guys want to come up? And we'll do a photo for this one? All right, thank you.
And while we're getting ready, I'll say thank you for taking time to honor our law enforcement officers. We really appreciate it, so thank you very much.
If any of my shorter people want to get in the front, yeah? I got, I gotta scooch in a little tiny bit. All right, perfect. One, two, three. All right, perfect.
All right, next up is agenda item number nine, introduction of new assistant city manager, Jesse Elizondo.
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. I wanted to take a moment to introduce the newest member of our team. Jesse Elizondo is our new assistant city manager, sitting over there on the cheap seats over there. We couldn't be happier to have him on board. We're super excited to have him here. Today is his first day, and we thought what better way than to come in and come to a council meeting your very first day as well, but we're really glad to have Jesse here. He's going to do great things for the city, and we wanted to take a moment to just introduce him, welcome him to the team. So thank you, Jesse.
All right, welcome. Good luck. Anybody have any thoughts? All right. You want to come up and make a speech to us?
I was going to say a speech? Speech?
All right, well, good to have you. All right, next up, we have our consent agenda. It's rather lengthy, a lot is fairly regular business. Does anybody have any commentary on the consent agenda or items they'd like to pull? Motions?
Number 10 I'd like to talk about.
Okay.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda items 11 through 20.
All right, motion by Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Councilmember Heiser that we approve agenda items 11 through 20. Is there discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye? All opposed? All right, motion carries seven to zero. We'll bring up 10 on its own now. Consider a resolution allowing the city manager to approve requests for specific construction activities related to the Lehman High School softball and baseball facilities project to occur outside the allowed timeframe per section 23-60. Mr. Zuniga, do you have any question on that one?
Yes, so I do want to support this, and I've seen that it's been very active. So what is the timeline to complete the fields before spring training, Lehman baseball field?
Yes, sir. Will Atkinson, development director for the record, excuse me, director of planning.
And what's this going to look like, Will? I mean, with the extra hours or?
Yes, sir. So, and we have a representative from Hayes CIST as well, in case they need to correct me. I am not, I don't follow baseball very much, but as I understand it, this will be wrapped up by the end of March for the occasional times that they will need to utilize it after the normal hours of 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. There are requests to ask it to extend it on the occasion from 9:00 PM to 12:00 AM for an additional three hours as needed. And it's mostly just going to be putting down the finished AstroTurf there, utilizing a bobcat to bring it out and to enroll it, so the workers can then fasten it down to the, to the fields.
School district have any? Okay. So, yeah, I was reached out that the baseball fields were falling behind the schedule, I guess, so they wanted to see if we could get it maintained and ready for the season.
Yes, good evening. Nate Wunsich, executive director of facilities, construction, and bond planning for Hayes CIST. It depends on how many days we have like today.
Right, rainy days.
We're on a very tight schedule as it is, and so it's better to have it and not need it than to need it and not have it. If anything is going to occur after hours, it would be relatively, it wouldn't be a lot of dirt moving because all the dirt yards are closed at night. However, it would be perhaps like Mr. Atkinson indicated, spreading out dirt or turf or gravel or installing trench drains or something of that effect in the evening after hours.
Like, how far are they now? Do you think they're about 60%, 70% around?
Baseball is, baseball is larger. It's a larger field, and so we have, we have three, we have three timelines. So we have, one is the baseball field, number two is the softball field, and three is what we're referring to as the venue, which is everything between the field, so that the plaza and the seats and the press box and all those other items. And so the plaza, the venue area is going to be the last item complete, and that's scheduled to be completed at some point end of April of this year.
Okay. Well, sounds good. Those were the only questions to see how far it was coming along.
Great, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Yeah, just real quick, just if you're going to be running a skid steer out there, just if you could do something to muffle the backup horn, or it's still safe for the workers but not intrusive to the residents there, that would be great. We've done that in projects before, so just something, just not to the echo of that backup horn on the skid steer doesn't go into the neighborhoods, please.
Okay, we'll make sure we're staying within the discipline level specified by OSHA, but try to keep it to a minimum.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Councilmember Heiser.
I just want to highlight or thank some of the school board trustees for reaching out to the city to try to make this happen, because this was really important. I had heard about it from some residents as well who have kids in the program, and you know, had there not been a willingness to collaborate on trying to put together a more feasible solution, you know, we wouldn't be taking this vote. So I just want to thank them for, for reaching out, especially trustee Flores, so thank you.
All right, anyone else? Motion to approve? All right, motion by mayor, seconded by Councilmember Heiser that we approve agenda item number 10. Is there discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye? All opposed? All right, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
All right, next up, considering possible action, agenda item number 21, consider and approval of a resolution of the city of Kyle, of the city council of the city of Kyle, Texas, approving and authorizing the execution of a reimbursement agreement related to Savannah Ranch Public Improvement District.
Good evening, mayor, city council member Stephanie Libby with Norton Rose Fulbright.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmember Stephanie Libby with Norton Rose Fulbright. What you have before you tonight is a reimbursement agreement related to the Savannah Ranch Public Improvement District. And just by way of background, City Council created the Public Improvement District back in March of 2022. In conjunction with this anticipated financing, council also created a TIRS that is co-terminus with Savannah Ranch. PIT and TIRS revenues will ultimately be used to finance public improvements within the district. Since the public improvements are scheduled to be dedicated to the city prior to a levy of assessment or PIT bond issuance, we're bringing forward a reimbursement agreement to council tonight for approval. The reimbursement agreement simply memorializes the city's agreement with the developer to pay for these improvements, notwithstanding the fact that they're going to be dedicated to the city prior to the bond issuance. So, I guess additional steps are steps moving forward. The developer is going to continue to construct the public improvements to develop the project. It's anticipated that they would come into the city with a request for a bond issuance sometime in the third quarter of this year. Happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
All right. Thank you, Stephanie. Does anybody have any questions for the presenter? It's pretty straightforward. Motions? All right. Motion by Councilmember Tobias, seconded by Councilmember Heiser, that we approve Agenda Item 21. Is there discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, Receive a Report Hold Discussion, Consider Directing Staff to Move Forward with Designing Roundabout or Traffic Signal at the Intersection of Daisy Lane at Bunton Creek Road. Mr. Barba.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protim and Councilmembers. Leon Barba, City Engineer. Council, this item is before you so we can decide which direction we want to move forward at this particular intersection. Let me go through some of the details on the, through the report. Here's some of the history. Right now, it's three lanes on Bunton Creek, four lanes on Daisy Lane with a painted median. There was a previous traffic study done back in '22, and it justified the need for a traffic signal. We assigned Cobb Finley to do this work of deciding whether we should go with a roundabout or a traffic signal, and that's required by city ordinance. They drafted the preliminary layouts, they evaluated the level of service. And Mayor, Council, I promised you a little bit more information on what a level of service means. I'll be showing that in a couple of slides later, so what that means. They developed some preliminary cost estimates and schedules, and they delivered a report to the city. We reviewed it, and they finally completed the report recently. This one was a tough intersection. You have some driveways that are problematic in that area, and you'll see those when we get to the S-slides. The existing condition, of course, it's always stop-controlled. It has a level of service F in the AM and the PM peak hours. As you probably, many of you know, there's long queue lengths for the westbound AM and the eastbound PM approaches. I had to look on the line to see if I could find definitions of level of service, and this is what I've found for levels of service. Now, we can all read this, and it looks good, at free flow, for example, on an A, free flow with volumes, low volumes and high speeds, all the way to F where it's forced or breakdown flow, unacceptable congestion, stop and go. Now, bear with me on this next slide. It is, there's multiple vehicles in there, and you can tell it's an old picture because there are no SUVs in there. Okay. Here's the level of service A. This is what it looks like, free flowing. Then you go with the level of service B, and then you go down to C. It's starting to get a little bit more crowded in there.
All right, Leon, we need you to cite your source on these pictures. What?
Level of service D, it's starting to get a little bit busier. E is really starting to pack up, and F is your I-35 at 5:00 in the afternoon. So, that's the levels of service that traffic engineers like to define how an intersection works. Let's talk about the roundabout benefits and some of the impacts. Benefits, fewer conflict points, lower maintenance costs, and there's some speed reduction involved. The impacts, you've got the existing driveways become a problem. You've got the learning curve for the new roundabout users. They have to learn how to navigate through the roundabout. We do need more right-of-way typically, and there are a number of utilities that are impacted that we have to move out of the way. And of course, it's a longer construction schedule. Traffic signal benefits and impacts, there's no additional right-of-way expected, fewer utility relocations are needed. We've added pedestrian crossings, lower construction costs, and shorter construction schedule. The impacts is there's additional user delay time. Higher speeds lead to more severe crashes, and there's more conflict points going through the intersection. We also have to move existing overhead electric lines and move them out of the way to place these traffic signals. Here's a proposed layout for the roundabout. I think, I'm gonna try this. I better not. There you go, laser pointer. If you can see this driveway right here and this driveway right here, those are problem areas when it comes to building that roundabout. So, they will, what you see now on this particular design is what I call a slip lane. If you're going to go east from Philomena, you don't have to go through the roundabout. You just slip right on through and go all the way to the east on Bunton Creek Road. Same is true for north, south, and one from the south back to the west. There's slip lanes in there also.
Does it really need the one on the north? I mean, I can see the reason for the one along Bunton Creek, but the one on the north, it seems maybe redundant to have a slip lane there.
It could be. It could be.
I was just thinking in terms of right-of-way acquisition and construction cost.
That's true.
It doesn't really seem like that would help anything.
Traffic signal, little impact to the, as far as right-of-ways are concerned. You still have the issue with driveways. As people pull up to the traffic signals and backup, there, people have a hard time getting out of those two driveways that I pointed to. Let's look at the level of service analysis that was done by our consultant. There's an alternative one is a roundabout. Alternative two is the traffic signal. As you can see in 2022, based on their calculations, we have a level of service A for both the, for the roundabout, both AM and PM. When we went to the level of service for 2028, it stayed at the same, level of service A. If you look at the traffic signal, if they were installed in 2022, they would have had a level of service of B, which is not bad. Then in 2028, the level of service would be dropping down to about a C in the PM hours. Recommendation, Cobb Finley and Associates recommends a roundabout based on the level of service. Let's talk about the construction cost and timeline. The roundabout is estimated at about $5.2 million. Estimated construction time, 32 months. And of course, we need right-of-way acquisition, a little over an acre, and utility relocations are needed also. Traffic signal estimated cost of $530,000 and estimated 18 months construction. Options, council can approve the design construction of a roundabout, council, or council can approve the design construction of a traffic signal, or we do nothing, leave the stop signs as is, or if you have any other recommendations, questions?
Councilwoman Parsley.
I drive that intersection like once a day, including Sundays. And the stop sign right now is the worst thing ever. So, I don't know how a traffic signal may help with any of that. Just my, that's the one that is right by Gemstone Palace, correct?
Yes.
Right behind Gemstone Palace is my church, and it's my kids' Jiu-Jitsu Academy. So, that's one of the driveways that is getting out of that, it's one of the driveways that leads to that road. And with the stop sign right now, you can barely ever get out of there. So, I don't know how a traffic signal may benefit that corner at all. I don't know how, I mean, I'm not crazy about the price of the roundabout, but I don't, I don't think that the traffic signal will benefit that intersection at all.
Well, that's kind of why I was bringing up that north slip lane. It didn't seem like, that's less land, less construction cost. The one on the south makes sense, but it's a fast and cheap, or it's a more expensive, longer, but correct kind of conversation. How do you determine that? But do we have any kind of fiscal impact on which choice?
And the other thing is, do, at any point, are we planning on extending that road, making it like a two-and-two lane? Because as of right now, it is so congested, and we're not even fully developed. So, I don't know how that's going to be in five years.
This is part of the bond? We just need like, I didn't think it was because it's further east is where the Bunton.
It's a separate project. So, if the council wants to move forward, we'd bring you back a design contract to get started on it. And then through the budget process this year, we would look at putting it in the CIP to fund the construction, and you'd have to, you'd be able to see all the offsets of what a decision like this is. It is an intersection that we do believe needs to be improved, and we wanted to get it in front of you so you could, you know, look at the options. As Mr. Barba said, it does take some time. You know, you're looking at two to three years to have this fully done with construction. So, if it's something you want to do, we wanted to get started on it fairly quickly so we could actually get it done.
Is there anything that also can be, I'm so sorry, go ahead, done with those driveways? Because like, just on a Sunday, getting out of my church and being able to try to hop into that line, it's almost a hazard. And there's a line behind. I don't know. It's just not, you don't see any good flow. I don't see how, not even a roundabout is going to help much, but I feel like the whole road needs to be redesigned.
Yeah, maybe a good question for us is like, what is an acceptable level of service that we're willing to approve when it comes to final intersection improvements? Like, is a C in five years acceptable? You know, the one by the school was more compelling. It was basically an F within five years. So, the, this one is, it seems like it could handle an intersection better because the intersection, the signalized intersection would be a B. But is that, you know, the roundabout is an A now, and it's, looks like it can handle all the growth. So, do you want to, do you want to say anytime we're addressing intersections, we want a five-year A level of service, and we're willing to make that kind of investment? Or are we willing to make something a little less as a standard? Councilmember Heiser. Councilmember Tobias.
Thank you. My thing is just a two-part question, and it is referencing if a roundabout gets approved in going forward. Is the infrastructure, the design itself, and number two, the property usages? So, going back to your proposed layout on the roundabout, yes, I kind of agree with what Mayor's saying about you have those feeder roads that would need to be able to go into the business like Bread Basket. And then, of course, there's that open lot that's there that's going to eventually come in to play. So, you have that roundabout going around that, and you've got to have some kind of feeder road. Also into going to Gemstone, I see that there's a detention pond. Not sure if it's water, or maybe it's just the design itself. So, the questions would be crosswalks at proposed, at the 400 area? Would there be, if the roundabout is to be voted in, would there be crosswalks that would be going right across where Bunton and Daisy, right where that corner intersection is? And then, the other one is the existing street in front of Bread Basket. We just addressed that. And also the property usage, the land that's needed to design this, the open field that's more up north. You know, how many acres do you think that the city will need to acquire for that additional area for the design of the roundabout? And number two, number two, follow-up on that one, was there future development? Maybe Mr. Atkinson can address that, that open field up there where the cotton field or the hay field is. Was there going to be a future development there to where it could impact the roundabout there? And then, just ending on that, if we do put a roundabout up there, you're going to have that flow which Councilmember Parsley is saying. It would be able to maybe get cars in and out, but then again, you're going to hit a stoplight right at Philomena less than maybe, I would say, 50 yards from the roundabout itself. And if you have that continuous flow going up north on Daisy and 1620 on Parkway, it is already, and like I'm pretty sure Ms. Parsley knows, on Sunday mornings, when you're trying to turn back down that left turn going by the hospital, it is still hard to turn because of the traffic that's flowing. So, those would be kind of situations to where, how do you think we would be able to manage that? Because if we're doing the roundabout less than 100 miles, 100 yards away, all that flow is going to eventually hit the Philomena stoplight, and people trying to turn left with the oncoming traffic from Daisy. So, it's, you're like right in that tight section of you want that flow to go. And again, if she's trying to leave on Sunday, it's still the same thing. There's going to be that continuous flow. How are you going to merge into Bunton? And if you go to the roundabout, then you get to get stuck up there, so. You're going to have that light there, and I've timed it for like almost 45 seconds on both ways.
Councilmember, I'm not sure I'm going to be able to answer all of your questions, but let me try to answer as many as I can remember. Let's talk about what's planned for the future with the road bonds. There will be a roundabout planned for Kyle Parkway at Daisy. There's also going to be one planned at Lehman and Bunton Creek, which is much further away than this intersection. So, there shouldn't be that much of an impact to this particular intersection. So, and then if the plan is to move forward with the roundabout, that would really facilitate flow through these areas with those roundabouts. Drainage, that is a pond that we put there because there's a lot of impervious cover we're adding here. So, we need to make sure we don't add any more runoff than we have to. So, this was just a schematic to show that we're going to have to address that issue when, if we design, we go in that direction to design the roundabout. The driveways are going to be critical and to decide, if you'll notice, the driveway at the, by the Gem Palace, the southern one, that one is planned to be taken out, and then we're going to have, move it up to the north end of it.
Oh, okay.
So, that's what we're going to, how we're going to address that particular driveway.
The one by the, that's facing the Washington area.
I'm not sure about that, but it's, they have an existing one at the southern end. That one has to be closed, and then we move it up to the north end. Of course, we need the property owner to let them know what's happening so we don't impact them as much as possible. So, that's the plan is to move that driveway to the north. The two on the, on the bottom, the southern end, we can ask the owners to look at relocating those driveways, but sometimes they don't like to have driveways relocated for various, your own reasons.
Well, but you're talking about they'll have a turn, a dedicated turn lane on both entrances. So, if I, I mean, I'm just thinking, if I was them, that'd be pretty nice to have that happen so that you could get into the business fairly easily, but.
Getting out, it's always the difficult part.
Mayor Protim.
No, just real quick. Michael brought up an interesting question, point on this was the light right there at Philomena. If you can go back to that picture, it'd be great. But anyway, since we've taken over the lights, is there a way that we could program that light to allow the traffic flow coming through that roundabout a little bit longer than what's coming off of Philomena? I think that would alleviate some of that, since we've taken over the lights in our city. I don't know if that's an option, but I think that might be a way to do it. But when I'm looking at the locations, and I'm looking at the AM and PM peak hours, I mean, it's only giving you an hour on Daisy Lane and Kyle Parkway, but actually, you're, you're probably three hours. I know the peak time is 7:15 to 8:15, but from 5:00 on, I mean, those roadways are backing up tremendously. And what I'm noticing here in downtown Kyle is with the increased traffic flow, lights are not going to help you alleviate that issue. Lights are just going to allow the traffic to back up continuously as well. So, I'm thinking that roundabout is probably the only way to go because when I look at our other busiest intersection, and that's here off of Burleson, and that flows always going unless the train's there. And that's kind of where I'm looking at the light and the train, because when the train's there, we still have flowing traffic, but it will back up once that train gets in there and holds everything up. So, I'm thinking that's where.
I used to think about that train too on Burleson, but if you think about it, what happens is the traffic will back up through the roundabout, and everything stops. But as soon as it's relieved, it's just a steady flow and all that backlog just, and if it's a, if it's a light, then you're cycling them through a light, which takes longer to relieve. That's just part of it.
And that's what I was thinking, maybe that one light we have on Philomena, allowing it to stay open a little bit longer on allowing that roundabout traffic to come out through there faster or longer than what we have running across on Philomena might be the option there. And that's kind of where I'm looking at the light and looking at the train, just trying to get a visual of it and give everybody a visual of what it's like. But once, the mayor's correct, once, once the train's gone, I mean, the traffic goes through there quick. So, just trying to be creative on how we do it. But the other thing is, if we are doing walk lanes, making sure we're not falling short on those as well. I'd love to see lit, white walk lanes, and that, what I mean by lit, I mean, I like to see the light, the yellow lights that come out on the road that blink so that people know somebody's coming across the road. I just don't want lighting overhead. I want to make sure that people know they're walking through because we don't. know they're walking through because we don't stop at roundabouts. So making sure that we're making people yield to those pedestrians would be important as well for me.
I did forget we have somebody who had registered and wanted to speak on this item. So if there are no objections, I'm going to bring forward Derek Pompey.
Evening Mayor, Mayor Proton and members of council. My name is Derek Pompey and my partners and I, we own that property that this proposed roundabout pretty much sits wholly on our property. And so I like it noted that we were not contacted about this proposed project. But thankfully Will gave us a quick heads up just a couple of days ago. So appreciate the opportunity just to offer my two cents. I'm not a traffic engineer, but did want to share my thoughts. But going forward, I would really like to be in the loop on any progression as this project moves forward, whatever form that takes. But all that said, I do applaud the city for taking an active approach to address, you know, traffic concerns and traffic issues in the city. I think most people don't realize how uncommon an active approach is in many cities. But I do think in this particular case, this preferred alternative of a roundabout, I think is a little misguided. I think we went through the numbers and the roundabout is 10 times the cost of the traffic signal. I also think that that figure likely underestimates the right-of-way acquisition because it's based on the Hays cap values, not the development potential or unappraised value of this property. Yet, the signal can produce an acceptable level of service at one-tenth the cost. So I think it's wiser that we stretch our transportation dollars to nine more areas that need work rather than focusing on, on one, would be my opinion. But to me, the 10x construction cost doesn't take into account the opportunity cost. And I know that's not an engineer's task. Because to me, this roundabout is proposed on land, which is slated for in the future land use plan, some of the most intensive development in the city, which is, which matches with our current application that Will and I are working on for mixed-use development. So the roundabout alternative would mean taking away an acre and a quarter, an acre and a half of future commercial, retail, office, multifamily, all of which is walking distance to the Seaton Hospital. So to me, that's taking away jobs. It's taking away amenities. It's taking away tax dollars, all in perpetuity for something that we can get near equivalent result. So the question to me is, why would we choose to delete these positive economic drivers to purchase some of the most expensive land in town, not to talk, you know, take dollars out of my own pocket. I'd rather go develop something nice, all to, all to get the same results or similar results. The signal requires no additional right-of-way, no utility relocation. We can add pedestrian crosswalks much easier and again, produce those benefits in half the time and alleviate some of the issues that we have now with the failing signal. So it's my opinion that the roundabout is not the ideal solution for this intersection. I know they have benefits elsewhere, but just given the geometry and some of the local issues in this particular instance, I don't think it's the preferred alternative, in my opinion, and hope you'll consider those thoughts as well.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. It's now closed. Councilor Heiser.
Yeah, I just want to make a general comment on cost because it's come up a couple of times tonight. You know, if there's one thing I've learned in the couple of years that I've lived here, is that nearly everyone is in agreement that the city historically is underinvested in infrastructure development. And we have opportunities like these to, to try to solve some of the problems that we face now and also problems that if, if we don't face, if we don't address now, we're only going to get significantly worse down the road. So just making a blanket statement for myself, you know, moving forward, I'm always going to, going to look at what is the best long-term solution for our problems, regardless of cost. Obviously, cost will matter on some level, but we need to be thinking big picture on how we can be a top-notch city when it comes to transportation and infrastructure. And I think these are going to be difficult decisions, but we know where we need to get to quickly. So thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
I'm really glad that you brought back the fact that Filomena has another light with Bunton. And although we could try to sync the lights to help the flow, we can achieve the same thing if we were to put a traffic light and then sync them in a way that we avoid the traffic jam one way or the other. And honestly, for the price, I, yeah, I don't think that we can justify the price of the roundabout. And I'm all about thinking about the big picture, but that intersection overall is awful. And unless we like tier everything down and build a bigger road, it's just, we're just patching it up. So I don't think that the roundabout will be what I'll be going for.
If I could just interject, you know, I know it's a dead horse and it's done, but I think that was the, the overall goal that we were shooting for, especially with, we're at Lehman and Bunton. Because you're right, Mayor Proton Rizzo, there could have been a way to where you can sync those lights during heavy traffic time to get those through. Because there is going to be an additional stoplights, four-way stoplight, less than a mile up north on BB and Dacey. So I guess in, in my opinion, in my overall theory, and again, I'm not an engineer, but my thought was in peak times, a stoplight and crosswalk at Lehman and Bunton would flow through, including this intersection to the timing to where you would be able to have an outlet going north. You have two going, one going south, another one going north, and all the ones hidden there. Because again, if you drive that, and like Councilman Parsley says she does on Sundays, once you try to make that left-right turn to go up Dacey by the hospital, trying to make that left turn on that hill when cars are coming down, it is so dangerous. And especially that's why I've also brought up to city manager about a specific light or just a street light, solar light for people to be able to turn in. So that was my overall goal when it came to these. So, and, and, and that's kind of why I wanted to bring up also that I remember hearing that there was possible future development in that area. What would be the cost that the city would have to forego for that additional land if we're going to be doing a roundabout in this area? I mean, I'm looking at it from both sides.
So you want to know what the cost would be for us to acquire that property?
Well, the thing was is that that was just my comment making of like if we're going to vote on a unanimous decision on a roundabout there, the point that this gentleman was bringing up, you know, that could take away from specific retail or specific areas and then how much the city long-term. And I, I understand what Mr. High, Councilmember Heiser is saying, we do have to invest in our city long-term. But in the same time, you know, there's, we are also need to be diligent about the taxpayer dollars going forward. And we have to be responsible for that as well.
So my thoughts are, so I agree about the, that we have to look at opportunity costs. I just look at it from the other side of the fence, sort of back. When the statement is made that this particular area is going to be developed with its highest intensity uses, that's the most people, the most traffic. So do you want to put the infrastructure that's appropriately sized for that? Or do you want, in order to get extra money at that highest possible intensity use, to undersize and accept an intersection that's lower service? So it's a trade-off. There is an opportunity cost either way you look at it. But I just, for me, I'm, I'm willing to, I'm willing to vote for just about any roundabout, especially when the design is such that we can achieve by the engineers, an A level of service for solving that intersection forever. And if we don't, the data is already showing that within five years, our city's going to be here for a lot longer than five years. It's already degraded down to a C. So I mean, I understand. I also, I definitely think that there are other intersections where a roundabout works better. And I'm okay not to do it here, frankly. But just our, what level of service are we willing to accept? Especially for the east side, especially for this area, you know, or what are we, what are we saying to them, to the folks who live out there? We could have spent the money to make your travel time, you know, verifiably, according to the engineers, better. I don't know that you can make the argument that you can sync up lights in an intersection and somehow change that number. The engineering group has studied the intersection and said, yes, the one at Filomena is a light. They're, they're looking at all of it, but in terms of the flow through that intersection itself would be downgraded to a C within five years. So anyway, I, I don't think there's a, I don't think there's a wrong answer here. But I, I don't think that, you know, sacrificing some prime land to get the right piece of infrastructure in so that the rest of the prime land can develop in such a way that the intersection can handle the intensive use is in any way to be looked at as short-sighted. I think that that's an appropriate mentality to have, frankly. So, Councilor Zuniga.
I agree with you, Mayor. I think we owe it to the residents that are moving in here and buying their homes there. Not so much to all the retail, but to the residents living and the kids at the school down there. So if we can't give them a class A service by building larger, wider lanes, then this is coming to us as class A for a roundabout. And it's an investment in the infrastructure where it is needed. I'm, actually do believe that we might need those extra pieces of side roads. Is that what you call them, Leon?
I call them slip lanes.
Looks like the slip lanes actually added additional layer of movement, of, of mobility.
Yes, they do.
Yes, they may cause a few more yielding areas, but I think that those other uphill or downhill sections are going to get fixed with the pieces of the road bond that are coming and that it's all going to work in sync. And there's opportunity cost, even if we leave it alone and have intersections, you're still going to have those traffic jams with those, with those large multifamily buildings there at a four-way stoplight intersection. We're not, we're not fixing the problem. We're just, we're, we're, we're building it up to a lower, lower level of service if we do it that way. So I just want to let our council members know that. I think that this is, now, the detention pond, I do have some questions about because I haven't seen that in other roundabout proposals. So that this one's jumping in here. Would there be other options to, to, to do something like this? Maybe, I guess I'd have to see what this would look like. Could we do it underground? Could it be somewhere else? It just seems that it's sandwiched in between a long, a large roundabout and a commercial property. So that's the only sticking point for me is the detention pond.
Our consultant is here tonight. Let me ask him, I have some ideas, but I'd like to hear what our consultant has to offer about the drainage. I think they, they realize that we're adding a lot of impervious cover. This area all leads to a small drainage ditch to the south end of those buildings. So there's not a lot of capacity in those channels. So we've got to keep the flow down to what was there before. So let me see if he has any ideas or thoughts that he could pass on to you. Stanley Fees.
Stanley Fees of Cobb Finley and Associates. We picked the location on the schematic for the detention pond just because, or mainly because that's the closest point to the outlet point, which is the ditch going, going to the south. I mean, you could put it further upstream, but then you've got to build that much more infrastructure to get your flow going from the detention pond down your outlet channel. And so that was the reason that we picked this location here. And that's not saying that it couldn't be built somewhere else, but you know, we're just doing a schematic level investigation at this point. So we're just trying to find a location to show that we would need that. The actual design would come later and it could, and we could modify that, maybe make, split it up into two different detention ponds, so it's not quite so big and still get to the discharge point that we need to. But again, that's, that's more of a detailed design decision as opposed to what we're doing at this point.
Right. Well, thank you for that pictorial.
Sure.
Mayor Proton.
Yeah, just real quick. But yeah, I, you know, I guess the biggest obstacle that I see in this is the northern slip lane, just north of the roundabout. And the reason why is I see so much traffic going to that one light there, having that extra slip lane in there. Because now you're coming up to Filomena with two roads. You've got the roundabout, you've got that northern slip lane. I, I just, that northern slip lane scares the heck out of me. I just, I just don't think that's a great idea. I think that northern slip lane actually needs to get out of that project. It's just not a, it's not a good use of flowing traffic. What's going to happen? You're going to have a bottleneck right there at that Y and you're probably going to have an accident there. Because the people coming off of that slip lane are going to be coming fast. People coming out of the roundabout, you've just come out of a roundabout, now you've got to look right real quick. And I don't think that's just a great use of, of, of infrastructure.
Okay. I would defer to my traffic engineer on that one.
Sorry.
That's a good point, Councilmember Rizzo.
So Carrie Jaeger with Cobb Finley. So yeah, that northern slip lane, the one, we have two lanes coming southbound on Dacey. So it could be modified. I don't believe I looked at it without that slip lane, so it would have to be another analysis. But we could do a sort of merging of the Dacey lane, but you are going to lose a lane of capacity at that point. The merge point is sort of a concern on that. And so you could do things like a speed table or something like that, that could actually cause, that would force people to slow down before they hit that sort of merge point. But.
Even separating that merge point sometime with maybe even some concrete, a barrier or something where that traffic's not hitting those people coming out of that roundabout that quick. I, I, that just scares me right there on that. That Y right there just seems, I know you're coming from two lanes and now you have two lanes, but then you're still merging to one lane right there.
Correct.
So I'd rather have that merge before the roundabout instead of after the roundabout.
So over there.
And that's, that's probably the only way I could approve this project.
So to bring that in the outer lane of the roundabout to go.
Yeah, correct. Thank you.
Councilor Heiser.
In, in y'all's professional opinion, do you have any knowledge of previous incidents or a higher propensity for accidents to take place when you have a feeder road into an offshoot of a roundabout?
Not offhand, I don't, sorry.
I mean, is it safe to say that if there was, that you wouldn't have included this in the design?
Correct. So we definitely, on those merge points, there is a concern and to make sure there is some sort of awareness that those cars are going to need to yield. So something like a speed table, something on those before that merge point in order to slow them down on those. They also are going to need to be very well signed. And with sort of, so people know where they're going and which direction.
Okay. So just to be clear, the question that's before this board is, do we want to move forward further designing a roundabout? Or do we want to go with an intersection? We can't really dictate specifics of the design from the dais because we're just giving our ideas. But I certainly think if we said, yes, let's move forward with the roundabout, those that are interested could talk to Brian about maybe having a meeting to really go over some of those details. I think that probably, this is a more complicated design than I've seen in Kyle before. So certainly, actually, I think would be worth it, having that conversation. But really, what we have to focus on is, what do we want to say? Yes, roundabout? Or let's just stick with the, with the signalized intersection? That's the question before us. Councilor Tobias.
Okay. Since this is going possibly be a two, two-part vote, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion on agenda number 22 to approve the design and construction of a traffic light to include pedestrian crosswalk at Dacey and Bunton.
You said traffic.
Traffic signal.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Tobias, seconded by Councilmember Parsley, that we go with a traffic signal as well as pedestrian crossings. Discussion on the motion, Councilor Parsley.
So I do see on the design of the roundabout that there is a way to have like a feeder road or almost, it looks like almost a three-lane road by Bunton Creek Road. I would like to see what are the possibilities that we can, you know, if there is a chance for us to, for you guys to do a design that will improve the flow and the traffic to include those driveways if we were to put a traffic signal in there. I'm, I'm all about roundabouts too, but I don't think this is the place to do one, especially having a light right by Filomena.
Councilmember Hazer. Yeah. I'm probably going to be a no on this, just mostly because I don't, I haven't heard enough. There's more that I want to know about the roundabout that's being proposed here before I want to scrap it and, and vote yes to, to do a traffic stop. It's not to say that I won't get there at some point, but at least for right now, that's where I'm at on it. All right.
Last comment. Just, look, honestly, lights are going to back up traffic no matter what you do. I'm, I'm going through downtown Kyle a couple of times a day, especially in the morning. It's backed up. In the evenings, it's backed up. Coming here to this council meetings, I come in the back way because Center Street is backed up. These lights, we've done everything to try to synchronize them, and it's just not working. So what, the question is, do we want to keep traffic flowing? Or do we, are we going to allow the backups to happen? And that's the way I'm looking at it right now. It's just, okay, with the growth that's expected for the area, it's going to be even a bigger backup. So, and I'm experiencing it right now through Center Street. I'm actually avoiding Center Street quite a bit here in downtown Kyle, so.
And, and to your point, totally agree that roundabouts do help with the flow. However, when you get out of that roundabout, you're still going to hit traffic at Philomena. And there's going to be a backup. And so imagine there's going to be that road coming out of the roundabout that if you have a red, if you have a red light, then you're going to find traffic inside the roundabout.
But they could also take it around to Dacey. So if you're going to Bunton, go Dacey, take a left out near Seaton, and you come out that way as well. So the roundabout would still help you there. So that would mitigate some of that light there. But at the same time, look, really, traffic lights are going to back it up. We're going to be getting residents in here upset about the backups. And we've seen it. I mean, we're seeing it.
I know. I totally get it. I just feel like if we, if we're going to find ourselves that in five years, this roundabout is not what we needed for that intersection because we are overflowing with like people and traffic, then we're going to have to design something different. I don't know if there is a way for us to kind of merge those two intersections, come up with something to make the whole.
And see, I think it's opposite. I, I think if we build the light now, then we're going to back up the traffic. In five years from now, it's going to be even worse.
But it's half a million dollars instead of five million.
Yeah. Well, do we spend the money now or do we spend it later?
Exactly. But in five years, do we, do we come up and we're like, hey, this roundabout is not what we needed?
In, in five years, it'll be double.
All right. Well, okay. But so, you know, we're making claims about that the, that the, because there are other signals, signalized intersections in the area, this particular piece of intersection is not going to be as good at moving vehicles through because they'll get backed up by the neighboring one. So that just makes me want to ask the question, did you consider the flow of the intersections around this discussion as you were performing this analysis? Because what you're saying is, five years from now, this intersection as designed will flow at an A grade, and a signal with the other intersections around will flow at a C grade. Did you take all of those considerations, the possibilities of synchronizing lights, the fact that if we put a roundabout in, it'll be a roundabout near a signalized intersection? What are your thoughts on that?
Correct. We included the signals. I'm trying to recall if I had the Philomena signals, but I know I had it in a previous analysis. I would have to go back and look at my model for it.
So when you're giving an A score of a level of service for a roundabout and a C score for the level of service for a signalized intersection in five years, you're taking all of those things, other factors into account. You're saying, even though there is another intersection nearby, this would still perform at an A level compared to a signalized intersection?
The software that I use to now, to do the analysis for this is a SIM traffic, which models every single individual vehicle that comes into the network. So it models them through the different intersections, the Dacey lane and the Kyle Parkway intersection, the Lehman intersection. It included both of those in there. Believe I had the Philomena, but I would have to actually go back and check on that. But it does model the vehicles from the Philomena into the roundabout and out.
Okay. All right. Just to keep in mind that there is going to be a roundabout at Lehman and Bunton.
Yes.
And if this one gets approved over there, that's going to be $10 million that the city's going to need to come up with for two roundabouts. Because five million for Lehman and Bunton plus the projected of this, $10 million for just two intersections.
Well, the TERS Board's intersections on Kohler's is 15 million on the west side. Do you want to, do you want to put the same level of?
It's just, it's just.
So should we be cheaper on the east side? Is that?
No.
The point you're making?
Is no.
Well, he's just noting, and it correctly, that it's extremely expensive. So we have to be committed to it. We have to believe in it if we're going to do it. Because there is a cost, an opportunity cost to that.
Exactly. That's what I'm trying to make.
What would be, could you produce a modeling of the traffic flow to include intersection and street lights around the area for us to see how is that going to behave? Or how would it affect if we do the roundabout or if we do the street light? Because that's what I would like to see. I work in that street by, I work by idea, Kyle. And there is that traffic in there. Right before my school, there is another school. So, and we have already a, a street light in there. And so what I'm not seeing is like, if we want to help with the traffic flow, we're still going to have to stop right at that stop, at that light. So traffic will be created no matter what. So that's what I would like to see, if there is a way for us to see a flow of the traffic with one or the other to include the traffic signals around it. So that can be modeled.
So can we postpone it?
Can we table this item instead?
Yeah, I can model it. Need to get probably some data from the city for it.
So you want to wait and come back with some additional information?
We can do that, Mayor.
Do you think that's valuable, Leon?
Yes, I do think council needs to see that.
Okay. So we can do it again, the whole.
We, we have a motion, a second.
So on that motion, I'd like to go and retract my motion on the approval.
That's amenable to the second?
Second.
All right. So we're going to wait. We'll bring it back. We'll get some more information. Frankly, I'm, I'm glad. This is a good discussion for us to have because there's no, while yes, I'm on one side, it's, it's because I place such a value on that particular style. But your, your argument of five million versus 500,000 should be considered. And he's back there saying it's going to be more because he's going to take us for every penny we can. It's basically what I heard. Goodness. So we're trying to improve the intersection at your place. Anyway.
There's a lot of factors, Mayor. You're, you're correct. There's a lot of factors with development. There's a factor with there. And it is a very tough intersection.
It's like a T.
And, and I hear and I understand everybody's position when it comes to a roundabout versus that. So that's why I'm looking at it from all angles. And I appreciate that.
And it's not really position about a roundabout. It's what's going to be flowing traffic in five or 10 years. That's really what we're considering up here. Because when you start getting residents up here complaining about the backups, it definitely changes you, your perspective when you're thinking about intersections. And we've definitely had our share of that, people coming in here and talking about the backups. And that's something we're trying to alleviate in our city, is making sure we have free flowing traffic. We're allowing people to commute through our city without a 30-minute commute into their home once they hit the city limits. And that's what's more important than anything else. I think you can't put a price on people's mental health when you're building something like this.
I would just add that since we're doing an improvement in our roads and we're designing really good roads, we don't want to underdevelop the intersections. And so that's why I'm careful is like, we just approved these really nice roads, but we're going backwards with some of these intersections in my, in my mind. So I want to make sure that we're, we still are doing it for that Class A service.
Okay. More discussion. Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to move on. Next up is agenda item 23, hold a discussion about the possibility of collaborating on a public radio station with a nonprofit organization in the city of Kyle and consider directing the city manager to prepare all necessary documents to support this effort. Councilmember Laura Lee Harris, congratulations on your first item.
Thank you.
What do you got for us?
I have prepared a briefing paper for us that I'm going to briefly go through. Austin Airways is a nonprofit corporation and has submitted an application to the FCC for licensing of a low-power FM station for Kyle, Texas. This station, if approved by the FCC, will initially be developed by Austin Airways with transfer of the license to a local Kyle-based nonprofit after 18 months of operation as allowed and required by the FCC. For more than 20 years, Austin Airways has been providing assistance to nonprofit radio stations both locally and internationally to help with FCC licenser applications, enhance or recover broadcast services in the event of disasters, and provide technical assistance. Services are generally provided free of charge to the local station. Typically, AA will apply for a license or help an existing organization apply and meet the operational requirements. AA does not continuously operate any radio station. I have personally worked with AA for about 10 years on a number of projects, including setting up Wimberly Valley Radio, which will be a model for this station. Austin, Austin Airways is the applicant for the Kyle area license. They have placed on their board several Kyle residents who have some experience in radio and/or entertainment. These are Robert Rizzo, John Russell, and Laura Lee Harris. They are in the process of applying for 501(c)(3) nonprofit for the new organization. The locals are, not AA. We will be doing that ourselves. The station will be locally-produced, mixed format, on air, and through a website for streaming of live and archive shows. The station will operate 24/7. As a nonprofit, it will be non-commercial and will cover its expenses through sponsorships, fundraising, and grants. This will be a unique opportunity as the application is filed as a public safety station. This means it will be available to provide timely information to the local community in the event of a public safety need or disaster, which will take priority over all other programming. Kyle is the ideal city for this type of station as no other radio station or local TV station is available to fill this need, with the exception of the city's own broadcast on spectrum, which has limited distribution. Kyle FM will serve as a supplemental media outlet coordinating with the city of Kyle per the city's needs. Emergency information will originate from local and state public safety entities. When in operation, Kyle FM will have a local station and tower site. In addition, the station will be able to broadcast remotely, including onsite coverage with public safety stations, operations, and at special events such as market days and festivals. The FCC is in the process of reviewing 1,550 applications from a variety of groups nationwide. The window for these types of applications, low-power FM, opens only every 10 years. So the window is now closed for applications. Kyle's application has been declared a singleton, meaning no other entity has applied to serve our area. The low-power FM window may be the last time that this particular window ever opens. So it's imperative that we, that the Kyle application be approved, or we may not be able to get this type of a local station. Austin Airways is requesting a letter of support from the city of Kyle to the FCC indicating author reservation for the new station to serve as its supplemental media outlet, providing public safety information within its jurisdictions. This does not require any funding from the city or expectations other than coordination as needed.
Anybody have any questions or thoughts? Mayor Protim.
Just real quick, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item 23 for the new Kyle FM. And looking forward to it. Thank you, Dr. Laura Lee Harris, bringing this forward. I think about the freeze in 2001 when we had limited service. To, to be able to get information out to our residents would be great.
So motion on the tables or second? Motion by Mayor Protim, seconded by Councilmember Heiser. You, you can keep going. I just want to grab the second. So just to be clear, your motion is to direct staff to bring back the, the resolution that was, that Dr. Harris proposed. Does anybody have any objections to having that come forward? I think the word on the street is that you had a big hand in Wimberly Valley Radio's founding and were able to secure, I believe, $150,000 worth of funding to help bring that about.
I did.
And I also think that it's pretty cool because from what you were telling me, the, in the event, this is not a, a, a radio station that is in our charge and like, we have to have a staff member on the, it's not like that. It'll be private or by a nonprofit. But if there's an emergency of any kind, what this agreement will do is it'll allow for us to have a, another way of communicating with people if cell service is down. It's just a different signal. It's like a redundancy in the system. You know, I was thinking about the winter storm of 2021 and, you know, it's maybe the pub, that radio station you don't listen to very often. But here, all of a sudden, it could be very needed. So I'm glad to see it coming forward. Any other thoughts?
Could be like any kind of Amber Mertz or anything like that? Or could it also be podcasts or something like that could be used? You never know. We might have.
Wimberly Valley Radio is popular.
We may have.
Councilmember.
Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome the Bear Hour.
Yeah.
I declared it.
But I'm going to request two hours a week to talk sports.
And we don't want to talk podcast.
With the, with the community. How about the Cowboys? All right. Any further discussion? All is fair, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. We adjourn. Thank you.